I'll call a meeting order, maybe with a roll call. Bridgette, are you gonna do that?
Yes, I'm here.
Right, call the roll.
All right, Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson? Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye, or here, sorry.
Barber? Barber? Shambler?
Here.
Cummings? Cummings? Ferguson? Ferguson? Redstone?
Here.
Gonzalez? Gonzalez? Johnson? Johnson? Lee?
Here.
Willa Graham?
Here.
Lindstrom?
Here.
Luce?
Here.
Turner? Turner? Vento? Vento? Wolf?
Here.
Zeron?
Present.
Chair Zelli?
I'm here, and I know that Molly Cummings is here but is having audio issues, and Councilmember Johnson is now here. And Deb Barber was gonna be a few minutes late, but she should be here soon. So this is, as I mentioned, committee of the whole, our agenda is one item. It's really an information item to go in into with some depth on Metro Transit's equity initiatives, their current program of activities. And that is the, that's the agenda. So without objection, we'll just adopt that. And we do have the approval of the minutes that were sent out in advance from the last Committee of the Whole meeting of October 7th. So is there a motion to approve in a second to approve the minutes?
Redstone, I'll make that motion.
Second by Lee.
Second by Lee, lovely, thank you. Any discussion? If not, Bridgette, you can-
Just one?
Oh, sure, yeah, Arifa.
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. In the draft minutes that I reviewed, it says that I had asked a question about whether or not staff had reviewed the strategic plan, and it was whether or not staff had input into the strategic plan. Other staff had input into the strategic plan, so if they can make that friendly amendment, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
I think if there's no objection, we can accept that as a amended correction amendment. Good, any other discussion or corrections? All right, I think we can call the roll then, Bridgette.
Okay. Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye.
Barber? Shambler?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Redstone?
Aye.
Gonzalez? Gonzalez? Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Willa Graham?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Turner? Vento? Vento? Wolf?
Aye.
Zeron?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. Great, so the minutes have been adopted. So it gets us to our information item, which is, as I mentioned, the Transit Equity Update. Wes Coystro will take us, introduce his team and take us through this. We'll have moments for comments and feedback along the way. I will say at the outset, we've heard from the Environmental Services and some of their equity initiatives, and we've looked at the overall equity framework. We're going to be wanting to hear more from the regional administrators' perspective about the kind of overall plan, but really getting into the detail here with Metro Transit, I think, is gonna be very illuminating. And as a way of, from my perspective, what I appreciate is that this is about our everyday business, not a side activity, it's kind of what we do, and I really appreciate that. Wes, take it away.
Great, thank you Chair Zelli and council members. We do really appreciate the opportunity today. And I'll, as you mentioned, I'll just start with a brief introduction. I'll ask Greg if he can bring the slides up on the, on the screen and move one more slide to that exciting introduction slide. Thank you. Our purpose today is to provide the full council with a whole cloth or broad-based look at what we're doing to more effectively and intentionally embed equity into our daily work. That said, I want to, I want to mention that equity is not a new priority or commitment to Metro Transit. Equity is inherent to Transit's purpose, to connect people to locations that are so fundamentally important to livelihood. And for years, we have followed the policy direction of the council to use equity as a lens to evaluate our operations, planning, and investments. Our policy guidance in these efforts has been Thrive MSP 2040, the 2040 Transportation Policy Plan, the council's equity policy, and the racial equity strategy and framework, all documents that we have had in place for some time. But the murder of George Floyd has led Metro Transit, like many other organizations and individuals, to ask what more we can do to advance equity, especially racial equity in the services we provide and in our workplace where services are planned and operated. Some of you have seen pieces of what we're going to be reporting out on today that included pieces in the Insights columns and presentations to the Transportation Committee, to the Transit Policy Work Group, and the Equity Advisory Committee. This, again, is an attempt to put that information more in whole cloth. And I also need to mention that we're not covering everything that we do to advance equity. For example, we do not have separate slides for programs such as TAP, Better Bus Stops, the Metro Transit Technicians Training Program, or, and the other workforce initiatives we have in place. And we are not addressing Metro Transit Police Department, which you already have a path for reviewing, or its homeless action team, which you've already heard so much about, and deservedly so. And we're certainly not suggesting that we're doing all, all that we should do. This is an ongoing learning process. So unfortunately, we will make mistakes, and many may miss some opportunities, but we do intend to get better and to keep improving and to learn as we go. So today, we want to focus on the new work that we're starting, and we, of course, welcome your thoughts and feedback as we continue this work. As, as some additional context, I should mention that we're also working on a strategic framework to guide our 2021 work plan development. And while we are calling out equity as a separate priority in our strategic framework, embedding equity into each of the strategic framework priorities into all that we do and into how we evaluate our success is critical to advancing equity in a way that becomes a sustainable part of our work culture. So getting on with it, today's presentation is structured in two parts. Part one will be a presentation by Eric Lind on equity data that we're looking at within Metro Transit. And part two will be a series of short presentations by staff who are working on different elements to advance equity at Metro Transit. I think one measure of success, we have eight or nine presenters, is that we, that we are, that we successfully, everything successfully technically works for us. But I believe everybody is here, and I believe we're prepared to provide this presentation. So I'll start, we'll start off with Eric Lind to talk a little bit about the equity data that we're looking at. Eric?
Thanks, and thanks Chair and council members for your attention to all this today. Could you advance the show a bit? Yeah, so my name is Eric Lind. I'm the manager of research and analytics in the Strategic Initiatives Group at Metro Transit. And one of my roles is to help facilitate data and understanding throughout the agency on a lot of different topics. And so we are trying to present a little bit of background, and my job is to set the stage for what data we're using to help understand the issues around equity, especially racial equity in our agency, and set the stage for the later presenters. So next, please. I want to start with a bit of an acknowledgement that even though I am a data guy, data and evidence cannot substitute for lived experience. And so a lot of what you'll see today is our attempt to understand issues that people experience in a little bit more concrete way than I do as a white man, for instance. And that this is not meant to be a substitute for that type of understanding. But what it does let us do is to understand experiences and inequities or equities where they exist in our service by looking at that data. But just so that is not taken as a substitute for understanding lived experience of people, which we are still very much trying to do. Next. So, and you can go ahead and flip forward, and I'll just say that our, our mission today is to describe a little bit about what we know about our riders, because that is ultimately who we are providing the mobility for, and we want to do that in an equitable way. And so the first step in that is to really understand who it is that's onboard our system. Luckily, we have a very good tool for that, which is the Travel Behavior Inventory Program that the Met Council runs, under the MTS section of Met Council. And they have a specific program called the Onboard Survey, Transit Onboard. And the reason it's so valuable for us is that the methods are statistically robust. They use random sampling, where they have trained interviewers with tablets who are instructed to take the fifth person and the 13th person and the 29th person that they encounter. So it's really randomly sampled, and what that means is that we can take those observations and expand them up to a really good understanding of our total ridership community. And so what we're presenting today is from that survey program in 2016, and so very much pre-COVID, should be the filter that we're looking through. Until the last couple of slides, I'll mention a few things about what we understand in terms of who's onboard still during COVID-19. And I should just mention that all this data is public, and the link at the bottom here will take you to that posted dataset if you or others are interested in, in learning more. So this, oh, I'm sorry, I'm clicking forward, can you move forward, please? Try to remember to do that, make a little beep. So I'm gonna run through a few quick snapshots of what we know from that TBI onboard survey about our ridership. Who, who is it that we serve directly at Metro Transit? Well, most of our riders are under 35 years old, for instance. Next. Many of our riders make less than $35,000 household income annually. This does include students, but it's certainly not only students who are on the low-income side who are ridership. Next. An important thing to understand, too, is that while, you know, transit is often first thought of in terms of, of work travel and does support a great degree of work travel, there are lots of other reasons that people use transit. And it's used not only for that peak, you know, downtown-oriented nine-to-five work commute that is, you know, such a focus of attention even right now, as it's not happening to that same degree. Lots of people use our, our services for off-peak work commutes or reverse-direction work commutes, or trips to colleges, universities. And, and then, of course, there's non-work travel that happens that's important to understand as well. So all the social errands, shopping, pharmacy, community trips that have to happen are, are a big part of the trips that we provide on Metro Transit. Okay, next. And then finally, the focus of today is thinking about racial diversity, racial equity. And so it's important to understand that as we look at our ridership, 54, 55% of our riders identify as white alone. 45% identify as Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And what I'm going to do is try to put this in the context of the region a little bit. So if you go forward one, please. So this is a graph I'll show you a few versions of, just to orient you to it. What I'm showing you is the background regional statistics of the population that are given by the census that update every five years. This latest version is from 2014 to 2018. So it kind of brackets that onboard survey in 2016. So again, comparing pre-COVID, this is a pretty good snapshot. The gray dots that you see on this graph represent the regional seven-county population. So if you'll click on the PowerPoint, you should see a little arrow pop up, hopefully. Thank you. So, for example, the seven-county region is 73% white, according to ACS. And if you'll click again, Metro Transit's ridership is something more like 54%. And so by looking at it in this way, you can kind of see that the longer the difference between the gray dot and the colored dot is, you can see the difference between the regional population and our ridership. And where the filled dot is to the right of the gray dot, you'll know that we have a higher proportion of that particular race ethnicity or people identifying in that way on our system. So this is what the system looks like as a whole. There is a significant higher degree of people identifying as Black and African-American, and a significant, significantly lower degree of people identifying as white on our system. So I'm gonna walk through a few of these for our busiest lines and kind of set the stage for a little bit of discussion after that. So next, please. So our busiest line, and these numbers that you'll see in the top left are the typical weekday averages, again, pre-COVID. So the green line is our single busiest line, of course. It has, like most of our services, a great deal of diversity in terms of race, ethnicity, especially notable that because of some of the areas in St. Paul that it serves, it has a much higher degree of people identifying as Asian than the regional population. Next. The blue line, again, because it is a big chunk of our system, kind of reflects the system diversity, but again, has something less than the regional population identifying as white. Next. And then we come to our two busiest bus lines that I'm gonna show. So Route 5, running from Brooklyn Center through Minneapolis down to Bloomington, is the first line that we think of as being a majority people of color. In this case, it's a majority Black, African-American. And there is, again, another high degree of people identify as more than one race who use this line. And next. And then the Route 21. And so Route 21, running on Lake Street up to St. Louis University and then to St. Paul, is a line which is not dominated by any one race and actually sort of different from the previous ones for that reason. It is really all walks of life, all types of people riding Route 21. And of course, Route 21 and Lake Street, you know, the core of the uprisings that followed George Floyd's death, and really, you know, a key route for us. And as I'm sure you're all aware, and as Katie Roth will talk about later, big plans for both Route 5 and Route 21. So the last one, if you'll move one forward, is, is a combination slide. So this, this profile, race/ethnicity profile, is of 10 commuter express routes. So these are the 10 busiest or were just before COVID-19 hit, serving about the same number of people. It's kind of right in between Route 21 and Route 5. So those 10 lines put together on a day, on a weekday basis. And what you can see is that these routes, which funnel people to the downtowns from outer areas, perhaps not surprisingly, given what we all understand our regional geography and, and housing patterns to be, this is actually more likely people to be white than the regional population, and pretty much less likely to be any other race/ethnicity, Black, Indigenous, people of color, with the exception of a slightly higher degree number of people who identify as Asian. So this really does indicate a contrast when we're thinking about racial equity, when we connect who's onboard with the different types of service that we have, whether it's the light rail, local bus, or in this case, the commuter express. So going forward, please, one. When, when we kind of put all of this together on a route-by-route basis, here we're separating things out by route classes. So all the routes that fall into the suburban local group are, are put together, all the routes in the core local group and so on. And so what you can see is that moving from left to right, you have sort of declining diversity in terms of race/ethnicity, and the suburban local and core local systems being very diverse and lots of different race/ethnicities. And by the time you get to the commuter express routes and indeed the commuter rail, you're dealing with a much more majority-white identified system. So this is, when we're talking about racial equity, when we want to talk about measuring things and understanding if there are inequities, we have to start with this baseline understanding that the Metro Transit system as a whole is made up of these different subsystems with respect to race/ethnicity. And so there might be, or might not be, correlations among service levels or performance or other things, as we'll hear about later, that are connected to these differences in terms of who's onboard which type of system. Okay, so if you go forward one more, please. The next two slides are just some data that's more up-to-date on how things are going during COVID-19. And the first is a graph was showing the difference from before COVID by the same types of route breakout. So BRT, meaning Bus Rapid Transit, suburban local, core local, supporting local. So these top four lines there that you see in the graph represent basically our core bus system. And it has declined, you know, circa 50 to 60%, but much less than the light rail, shown in pink, and the commuter express in North Star, shown in that kind of orange, which is more like 95% declined. So on the right, you can see our official ridership statistics for September. And, you know, there are 62,000 trips being taken on our bus system daily. I mean, I'll point out that that is a lot of trips that are happening even during COVID, and that we should be very much aware of the, you know, the mobility that we are still providing as a system. But compared to a year ago, in 2019, it was 151,000, so clearly a big drop. Light rail, again, is down about 2/3 to 75%. And North Star is down quite a bit more than that, over 95%. So if you put together the slide previous to this in terms of who is onboard which system and, you know, how the systems are doing, you can get a sense of kind of probably who's left onboard. And we're hoping that the, the TBI onboard that's gonna be happening in 2021 and 2022 can help us understand this even more deeply. Oops, sorry, click forward one more, please. This is a spatial view of boarding, so this is sort of, think of this as demand during September, and obviously under COVID conditions. The darker the circle, and the bigger the circle, the more boarding that have been going on. So we still have a lot of boardings concentrated in the downtown Minneapolis, downtown St. Paul, obviously the green line. And, but what I wanted to point out and what the green shaded areas represent is areas of concentrated poverty, where more than 50% of the people identify as people of color. And, you know, what, what this means for us from an equity standpoint is simply that the people we're serving right now are the people who we should be considering in an equity framework. So basically, that's where the demand remains. And to the extent that we're providing service, you know, that, that is a focus of equity. So I think that's my last slide, so I think I wanted to, if you go one more. I'm opening up to questions, and Wes, I don't know if you want to handle the questions, but I appreciate being able to, to share this info with you.
Yeah, we thought this would be a good place just to pause to see if people had comments or questions of Eric on the data, and, and before we move on.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Mine's just really quick, and it relates to North Star. So, you know, they all have their drops in ridership, but North Star, you know, really took, I think, the biggest hit, right, as far as a percentage goes? And, you know, you, you, it's fixed, right? It's rail. So how, how do we, how, oh, this, okay, I'm just gonna say it. Like, do we ever make the call that we severely limit service or just cut it off for a while? Or are the costs gonna come in because we have fixed costs anyway? Or is there a way to encourage people to get back on it? Because I was just stunned by the dramatic drop there. So I'm just, it's mostly just wondering how, how we manage to that.
That's actually a timely question, and it's, it's a bit of a debate with some of the counties who are helping fund it and Mindot and ourselves, because the drop has been, like all commuter express, 95% or more. And the cost of it is, is very expensive, and even though we've reduced it to two round trips a day on a, on a fully subsidized basis, it's, it's very expensive. So I don't know, Wes, you want to take that question?
Well, I'll, I'll certainly just add a couple of, couple of things to your response. It's absolutely right, it's something that we're looking at today and should be looking at today. But I'll mention that North Star is a commuter express route. And just like North Star, where we're down 95, 96, 97%, it's 95% now, it was down 97%. We, we, our other commuter express routes are down by a similar amount. But North Star gets isolated for a couple of reasons. It's the only express route that's a commuter rail route. And it's, and, and it's expensive to run commuter, to run commuter rail. So, you know, the questions are, are timely, and the questions are necessary, and I think those are the ones that we're pursuing. As with North Star and all commuter rail, you know, the question comes back, how soon will they rebound? I think what Eric is showing you today, that, that, that we've seen the most drastic losses in commuter express routes. We've seen the least amount of ridership losses, somewhere in the neighborhood of 50, 55% in our local and core local services, and supporting local services, rather. And the question's gonna be, how, how, to what extent, and when will they rebound? And to what extent does, does removing service prevent rebound? And those, those are kind of the hard questions that, that are in front of us. With respect to what we have today, I'll mention that because we're having the strong- we've, we've reduced all our commuter express routes fairly significantly across, across bus and commuter rail. I don't mean to obfuscate this, but it's really a big-picture issue. And we have retained services in the supporting local and local route. We're near 100% services, service levels in core and, in local and, and local supporting routes. And that's as it should be at this point in time. The big question is, when is it gonna change? What, what, how does our behavior in response- What, what, how does our behavior in response to the current impact the rebound from this change? And and I, for one, can't wait till the pandemic issue changes so that we can, we can start watching that happen a little bit. But there are decisions to be made today, and we've made some already.
And the, just to put a finer point on it, we're publicly saying, because it's true, we're considering all options. But it'll certainly be a topic on both sides when we think about a budget year and a legislature. Also, MINDOT has been studying what the, what the cost and what the feasibility of extending the service to St. Cloud, which is kind of the original intention. But having said that, there are costs if we were to temporarily suspend the service and we, and we were able to do that. There's cost to suspending it. There's cost to starting it back up. So it's, I think, some of the things that are being weighed, particularly in North Star.
And and I would add there are carrying costs, not just the cost of ramping down, but the cost of maintaining, which will be really important, which would be really important, maintaining our capital assets, including rolling stock and facilities. There's significant cost in that. You just don't mothball a train engine. Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Chris?
Dear Chair, just a question about Slide 19. So I mean, just dumb it down for me. I mean, looking at the slide, I would see this sort of a sign of this is where the greatest need for transit service is. Is that a fair way to sum that up? And and then the follow up on that would be, I would be interested to see an overlay with LRT and BRT lines.
I've learned not to summarize Eric's slide. I'll let Eric summarize his, his data.
Thanks, Chair and Councilmember. Yeah, and and Adam Harrington piped up there to say that there's kind of a better explanation coming up from him and his Service Development Group. But you're right, pointing out that it intersects with the amount of service that we're running right now. So there are more trips where more, more trips, more boardings are happening, where more, you know, vehicle trips are being made and kind of where the service is. But it's cyclical because we know that this, this is where the demand is, is in these areas where you see those higher. And that it's been consistent, it's been consistent all summer. So before and after George Floyd, there was a huge, you know, demand in South Minneapolis for transit trips that we've been trying to serve with infill trips. And the reason the schedule is almost back to 100% what it was before is because we were running into capacity issues, given our COVID limits of carrying all the people that needed to make trips. So it definitely, to me, I read that as this is a demand signal under COVID.
Eric, I have a more, also a timely question. The B line and the D line are kind of in the news this week and certainly relevant today. Governor signed a funding bill this afternoon, which is fully funding those. Those are really important lines. They're kind of arterial, more enhanced. But they're bus service through the heart of our most traveled routes, the number five, number 21. Do you, do you have data on the A line and the C line broken out? Kind of as you've done between light rail and commuter and in terms of who our existing riders are on, on that arterial bus rapid transit? Maybe I missed that.
Yes, Chair Zelli, I don't know if it's possible to bring up the show again.
Well, on the 18, it has
Yeah, so Slide 18 shows that BRT, which includes both the C line and the A line.
Okay.
Are actually the, the lines that have declined the least. So there's maintained their ridership the most. And proportionally, that's way more C line than A line, but it's both, both together.
Are those lines disproportionately carrying BIPOC ridership, much as you've seen in some of the other posts?
Certainly C line. And so the, the 2016 TBI survey, which most of this is based on, obviously only included the, the A line, which had just opened at that time. And the C line that opened last year isn't included in that. But when we look at Route 19, which was predominantly replaced by C line, it's definitely much more aligned with, say, the Route 5 or other local routes, which are predominantly people of color.
But it's, that's declined the least.
And I, and I would add, Chair Zelli, that, you know, in part, that's because we are locating those in areas where transit is most needed. And, you know, I think that that's, that's an important part of the story is that, and the, and the, on, the coming story is of D line and B line that we'll talk a little bit more about later.
Any other, thanks, Eric. And Wes, any more questions, comments, thoughts?
This is Councilmember Wolf.
Chair Wendy.
Did any of the data include disability status for the riders? And and feelings about safety and and ability to use the service? Because I know when we've had some of our metro mobility listening sessions in the past, people have brought up that while they might be able to physically take the regular route transit, they don't feel secure enough to do so because of being sort of inherently vulnerable. And I don't know if there's any of that sort of data included in the, the work.
Yes, Chair Zelli, Councilmember. The answer is yes. I'm sorry I did not include that in one of the overview slides of what we know on, from the TBI. But about 10% of our ridership as a whole identifies as having a disability. And while the focus of this presentation was particularly around racial equity, I know Robin Kaufman is going to discuss later some of the outreach we've been doing, where both, like, the safety and security question has come up and that we are able to kind of look at that question by whether people also identified as having a disability or not. So I think we may have some information on that.
Thanks. Chu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I missed the first portion of the meeting and I just logged on about 10 minutes ago. And you may have covered this already, and I may have missed it when I reviewed the material prior to the meeting. But Councilmember Wolf triggered it for me when she asked about people with disabilities. I'd ask the same question as it relates to people over the age of 65, the senior, the senior riders.
Yes, we, I mean, so we, we do have a good sense of the percentage that are in the different age groups. And when we look at the results we're getting back from engagement surveys, we definitely can look at that by whether people are in that age group or not. We don't have that broken out by sort of race ethnicity by age group here. But again, that's something else we can do, too.
Anybody else? I can't see everybody, but well, hearing none, are we moving on to the next part? Wes or Leslie?
Yeah, I think we'll move on to part two, and and this will be a status update on some of the new work that we're doing around the council and or new approaches to old work. And Leslie will be starting it soft. Leslie Kanderas. Leslie?
All right. Chair Zelli, Councilmembers, good afternoon. My name is Leslie Kanderas, and I'm the Chief of Staff to the General Manager here at Metro Transit. And as Wes said, I'm going to kick off part two and just provide a bit of, a little bit of background and context before we get into the specific updates. So just first, I want to reiterate a couple of the caveats you heard Wes share with you at the beginning. Today, we're really going for breadth and not depth. But as a result, the trade off is we're leaving out some important programs and initiatives and details. But we're trying to focus disproportionately focus on work that we've started recently or started approaching differently recently, or work that's otherwise reached a new phase within the last few months. So another theme throughout all of this is these are items that are work in progress in many ways. So it's better to think about this as kind of our work items rather than a list of hard and fast accomplishments. But certainly, we would welcome the opportunity to return in the future and hear your feedback today, but also keep you updated as we continue to move forward. So with those caveats, Greg, next slide, please. One more slide. Sorry, I forgot that one was in there. Okay. So this slide and then the following slide are really meant to highlight several of the steps that we are starting to take in 2020 to become more deliberate and intentional in our equity work. As Wes mentioned, following the murder of George Floyd, employees were rightfully asking questions and sharing concerns about whether Metro Transit can be doing more to advance equity, particularly racial equity, and doing more to dismantle systemic racism in our organization and throughout the region. So in early June, the General Manager encouraged Metro Transit staff to share their ideas with our Equity and Inclusion Team. And he asked the team to develop a list of recommended action steps. So after my overview, you're going to hear from Sarah Barris and Andrew Kimball about the Equity and Inclusion Team's process and recommendations. And also in June, the General Manager held a series of meetings with his direct reports to debrief Metro Transit's response during the governor's peacetime emergency declaration and to discuss questions staff were raising about the state of our equity and anti-racism work. And as one of the outcomes of those discussions, the General Manager sent his direct reports a list of 10 initial equity steps around June 25. And so these initial, these are initial equity steps, and that's why that word is the first word on the slide, because it's not meant to be all encompassing, but rather, these are steps that we felt we could start right away this summer and get going on as Equity and Inclusion Team continued to facilitate the process, listening to employees and gathering work. So the rest of the items on this slide and the following slide are coming from that June 25 list. So I already mentioned you're going to hear from Sarah and Andrew about the Equity and Inclusion Team's work. The next item on there, the strengthening processes for centering our work on public engagement and riders' experiences. The General Manager's list of initial equity action steps is really pushing us to develop systems and processes to more authentically embed what we're learning through public engagement into our work. And for more context, at the beginning of 2020, before COVID, the General Manager had made several organizational changes within Metro Transit. And some of those changes were specifically designed to elevate the work of customer relations and public engagement staff to ensure that the voices of our customers and our community are really shaping and guiding our work. So to that end, you'll also hear from Robin Kaufman today. She's made several changes already to the public engagement unit and our approach this year. And she's going to talk specifically about the Listening and Learning Through Crisis Project that her team conducted this summer. Another item on this slide is the Developing Equity Evaluation of Quarterly Service Changes. As Wes mentioned at the beginning of this, providing transit service really is at the heart of Metro Transit's potential to advance equity in the region. But we also know it doesn't happen automatically. We need to be deliberate and intentional to make sure we're operating and investing in our service in ways that lead to equitable outcomes. So one of the initial equity action steps from June was committing to be more deliberate when looking at and communicating about the equity impacts of our service changes. So you'll hear from Adam Harrington about how the Service Development Department is developing an equity evaluation to really go beyond the more informal discussions that were already happening when quarterly picks were occurring. But right before Adam speaks, you're going to hear from Katie Roth to talk about the arterial bus rapid transit planning and investments. Arterial BRT obviously is not new work for Metro Transit, but bus rapid transit investments represent one really critical tool. And as such, we wanted Katie to speak to some of the latest developments on this front. Developing transit equity metrics, developing a set of transit equity metrics is another item on the list from June. Rachel Dunka in Metro Transit's Strategic Initiatives Department has long led Metro Transit's efforts to develop key performance indicators or KPIs, as well as efforts to cultivate practices around reviewing KPI data. So today, Rachel will share some of the initial approach to developing equity metrics and where that work is heading next. And then before we conclude, I'm going to just provide a really brief update on the work we're doing to perform budget equity analysis as well. Next slide, please. So before we get into all these updates, I wanted to share with you the rest of that initial equity action steps list that came out in June. We're not going to have separate presentations on all of these items today, but my hope is some of these are more familiar to you. You would have encountered them in other information items or business items over the course of last year and a half. But just to quickly run down this list, another one of the June initial equity action steps was the General Manager directing all his staff to really look at what programs we have in place now that if we strengthen them or expanded them or change some aspect of them, we could further advance equity. So some initial examples of this include expanding eligibility for the Transit Assistance Program. As you know, the Transit Assistance Program, or TAP, is the program that provides people with low incomes with $1 transit rides. And this summer, we created two new eligibility paths to enroll in TAP, unemployment insurance and being a refugee or seeking asylum. And so the enrollment through unemployment insurance began on August 15. And already, 10% of our total TAP applications are coming through that path. So TAP staff say that's pretty significant, given how new that eligibility option is. And TAP staff are still actively working to recruit partners to enroll people who are refugees or seeking asylum. That's proven a little bit more challenging to implement, but they're actively working towards that as well. Another example of a program we can continue to invest in is the Better Bus Stops Program. Some of you have heard Wes mention before that Marilyn Porter, the Director of Metro Transit's Engineering and Facilities Department, has talked about the importance of making Better Bus Stops a true program and not a project. And just for some background, Better Bus Stops is a program that really serves to improve the transit customer experience by investing in accessibility, transit information and shelters. It began back in 2014 in response to community concerns. And Better Bus Stops really focuses shelter investments in neighborhoods and areas of concentrated poverty where the majority of residents are people of color. Since the inception of the program, all 12,000 of our bus stops in the system have been updated with new signs and route numbers, a unique stop number and contact information. Stops with more than 10, 10 or more daily boardings have additional information, including a route map, information on service frequency, route direction, route destinations. Over 100 shelters have been added. Other shelters have been improved with heat and light. And moving forward with a combination of existing funds and funding that's identified in the preliminary 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program. If that money becomes part of the adopted budget, Metro Transit would have 6 million available to invest during the upcoming CIP time horizon, which could improve up to 500 additional bus stops. Another one of the initial equity action steps from back in June was requiring equity to be addressed as part of the Thrive Analysis and Business Items. I think this is a good example of something that's on our list as a work item, not an accomplishment yet. But just for context, you read business items and you, I'm sure, have noticed that there's the Thrive Lens Analysis section on them that was added back in December of 2016. What the General Manager is asking all Metro Transit staff to do is when filling out that part of the business item to make sure to directly address equity. And again, that's been in there for almost four years. So it's frankly something we should have been doing anyway. But I think we're finding that we need to do more to help staff think through their projects or the decisions they're going to be bringing to council early on in the process. So by the time they get to writing the business item, it's not a matter of checking the box, but there's actually really substantive story to tell about how they thought about equity throughout their process. I'm trying to think, I'm going to kind of combine the Human Resources one and Office of Equal Opportunity one. These are both examples that in June, we decided to regularly schedule them to come to senior staff meetings on a regular basis because both Human Resources and the Office of Equal Opportunity play really key roles in, in the efforts we're trying to further here at Metro Transit. With Human Resources, Wes briefly mentioned the Metro Transit Technician Training Program. Perhaps you saw the Star Tribune article from this weekend where the mother-daughter team recently graduated in our most recent cohort of that program. They're among two of 15 recent graduates. And as a side note, you should have been invited to the virtual graduation celebration next Tuesday. So it's that program that has really been a way to help job seekers with little to no experience on a path to a full-time maintenance role here at Metro Transit. So that's a good workforce equity story where we've partnered with HR. I would say, though, that we also recognize there's a lot more work we need to do on the workforce, diversity, equity, inclusion front. I think you don't have to look much further than the presenters today. The majority of us identify as white. I think you don't have to look much further than the presenters today. The majority of us identify as white. And generally, even though over 40% of Metro Transit employees in aggregate are people of color, black and indigenous, the further you move up in the organizational hierarchy, the less racial diversity you see. So we recognize we have a lot of work to do on that front, and so that partnership with HR is really critical. Similarly, we're having good conversations with Office of Equal Opportunity, not just about contracting and purchasing, as it says on the slide, but also about the affirmative action plan in ways we can really be doing our part when OEO is investigating complaints to make sure that we're aware of those and those are handled properly. A couple more on the side before I turn it over. Continuing to pursue legislation for administrative citations. When we've looked at what other transit agencies are doing in the realm of transit equity, decriminalizing fare evasion is really a frequently mentioned topic. Administrative citations authority is important because it would allow us to make several changes in how we approach fare compliance and how we approach public safety on transit generally. First, the council could lower the fine for fare evasion from the current $180 fine. So it's more commensurate with the failure to pay a $2 fare. Administrative citations would not go through the court system. Furthermore, the authority would allow us to increase official but non-police presence on our system. Administrative citations authority would allow non-sworn employees to check fares and issue administrative citations instead of that happening with a sworn police officer. And since it is a misdemeanor in state law, those citations do need to be written by police officers. Governor Walz approved us to pursue an administrative citations policy proposal for the 2019 legislative session. And he also included it in his, as both the policy and the funding in his 2020 supplemental budget that came out in March, right before COVID hit. So this has not become law yet, but we continue to go through the process with the hope of introducing it again in 2021. And then finally, we're not, as Wes mentioned, we're not spending a lot of time talking about the Police Department today. I know the Citizens League is starting up their process and the general manager, Chief Razzell, are eager to be part of that work as appropriate and certainly eager to hear what the Citizens League learns through the process of the robust community engagement they have planned. And in the meantime, you'll recall back in August, Chief Razzell came to really provide a much more in-depth overview of the Police Department, including really his policing philosophy, the innovative practices he's seeking to institute, and some of the community partnerships that he and his team are committed to fostering. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. Greg, if you want to advance to the next slide. Andrew and Sarah.
Good. Good evening, Chairman and the Met Council. I'm one of the people from the E&amp;I team to Equity and Inclusion, if you can move a slide up. This is the team that Wes and the board have put together. You see diverse couple people on the frontline. This is basically the frontline staff, people that we want to, who came up with this group, came up with this team. And this is the team that is working for, in the inside, to help Metro Transit to be more equity and inclusion. And I want to turn it over to our team leader, Sarah, and she'll tell you how we came up with certain recommendations.
You might be muted, Sarah.
Great, sorry. So thank you. I'll restate, thank you. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Chair Zelli and council members for having us today. Could you please advance the slide? Thank you. So as Andrew said, starting in June, the general manager charged the Equity and Inclusion Team with generating recommended actions driven by the input of staff from across Metro Transit. So during this process, we heard from staff through email to the Equity and Inclusion General Email Inbox, an anonymous form, anonymous written comments submitted on site, town hall, frontline focus groups, Advancing Women in Transit Employee Resource Group, the Transit, Metro Transit Police Department roll calls, one-to-one interviews, and we also included the staff, the staff-signed letters submitted to the council. So together, all of that data, all of that input and voice is what we utilize in order to generate our recommended actions. During this process, I responded personally to each email and anonymous form where a response was requested. We gathered 285 individual comments. And like I said, those were what was really transformed into the recommended actions, which we submitted to the general manager on October 23rd. And those recommended actions are right now in the process of being reviewed and applied during the strategic framework building process. And so that's underway right now in the months of October and November. Could you advance the slides, please? Thank you. So here you will see some of the themes that, or not some, the themes that came up during the comments that we received. I'd like to point out that, you know, we've got these 15 themes here that really showed up. But 47% of all of the comments were represented under that first theme, accountability and transparency. And so that's a huge focus area that people want to see real action behind. And I think a lot of the work that is being described today really aligns with that desire that staff would like to see improved when it comes to the work that we're doing around equity. And so I'm going to hand it back to Andrew to really comment on the importance of these themes, this work, and the value that it has for our staff in our region.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to let the chair and the Met Council know, I'm a frontline worker. I'm a driver out of Ruder. I'm the one of the drivers that really serves the people that we are talking about. I live in the African-American, lived on the North Side. And we came up, I worked, and so we asked, as this team, what can we do to help Metro Transit to be equally inclusion as a driver and as serving the people? And so we asked the frontline staff, and even though we're not talking to about the cops, but the Metro Transit cops, the janitors, the cleaners, the fielders, everybody who work on the frontline. You know, they would just wonder, how can we be better? How can we serve our people better? But also, how can we grow and be able to move up, up higher in the community? And so we came up with these things and we took the first five and addressed them issues. And then like Sarah said, the number one issue was accountability. We want the Met Council and our senior staff to be honest and be truthful, be transparent with us, how we can move up. How can somebody grow into the company? As we, somebody said, we see a mother and a daughter that came here and now they about to be living a nicer life and be able to move up in the company. So we just, I'm just, as a frontline staff, just wanted to let Met Council and the chair that we really want to serve the people better, help better, get more training. But we also want to be able to move up in the company, and we just need your help. Thank you for hearing us out. Now I'll turn it over to Robin.
Excellent. This is Robin Kaufman. Next slide, please. Mr. Chair and committee members, thank you. Good evening. My name is Robin Kaufman. I'm the Director of Administration. And in this role, I am overseeing the Outreach and Engagement Department at Metro Transit. And so, next slide, please. I'm going to talk a little bit about the engagement process that we went through in August. We really heard that, you know, there'd been so many changes in the community, and we really felt that we needed to kind of put a pause on projects and take a few minutes or take a month and, and ask our, ask our customers and our, and the communities that we serve what, how their priorities have changed and how, how their needs have changed. And so we sent, we set a goal of of receiving 1,000 responses and surveys. And we also set a goal of having 45% BIPOC representation in those surveys. We used a variety of strategies. You know, we weren't quite sure what was going to be, what was going to work with due to COVID and kind of the changing needs. So we, you know, used a variety of strategies, including website, emails. We tried different strategies with social media and trying to actually not just do a static post, but actually kind of get a little dialogue going. We engaged some ethnic media where they did, where they did a paid article and promoted linking to the survey. And then we also spent a lot of time, a lot of staff across various departments, actually quite a few departments, went out to transit stops, some of our busiest transit stops and centers and and surveyed, did random intercept surveys of our customers. And we also did go out with some of our operators and our MTPD staff and officers. And we were surveying as they were distributing masks to individuals. So it was a nice dual focus. So we, we were successful in that we received over 18, over 1,800 responses. 1,400 of those were online and four, over 400 of those were in person. And you can see that we almost achieved our goal with the, with the diversity representation. You can see the bottom pie chart is showing the race and ethnic breakdown pre-COVID, and that's tied exactly to the data that Eric presented earlier in the presentation. And then during our Listening and Learning Engagement Process, we were able to achieve 41% BIPOC community engagement. The, the primary difference there is in the, in the yellow pie piece, the black and African-American community. And I think the difference was 19%. We achieved 19% and the ridership is about 24%. Next slide, please. So what we learned, we learned that the demographics and the responses differ between the online and in-person surveys. I'm going to show a few charts here in a, in a slide or two. We do need to use multiple strategies to engage a diverse community. We learned that what one, what works for one community may not be as successful to another. We found that some strategies were more effective than others. And so we're learning those, learning and applying what we learned in our, some of our upcoming engagement. And then we also learned that community doesn't have a lot of capacity for meetings. We did reach out to about 75 community groups. And I think about, just a handful of them actually took us up on having them, having us come to one of their events or one of their meetings to talk about, talk about transit. Next slide, please. So I think this is one of the most impactful things that we learned, and it's really that the survey method matters. Eric helped with doing a lot of the analysis here and helped generate the slide. And you can see the bar chart on the left, our bar on the left is the, the breakdown of race and ethnicity of the in-person surveys. And you can see that over, over 50% of the people we talked to were either black or identified as black or African-American, while less than 25% were white. And if you look at the online surveys, almost 50% of our online surveys are white and less than 10% are black. And you'll also notice with the online surveys, about 25% of the respondents didn't, didn't mark what their race or ethnicity is. And what our previous experience has been is that a lot of times that those respondents are white as well. So it's probably greater than 50% white. Next slide. We also learned a little bit about our priorities. So, and we learned that there is, again, a little bit of difference between our on the in-person surveys and what we were seeing online. So the chart, the green bars on the left, those represent the in-person surveys where we asked people to identify things that were important to them or as a priority. In the top three categories there are vehicles are clean, the buses or train is on time, and then the highest rating is feeling safe and secure while they're on our vehicles. And then if you look at the right side of the chart, that's our online survey. You can see the orange indicates that an item has always been important to, to riders and red is showing that it's more important now. So really, all the priorities were important. But I think it's interesting to note that the thing, the, the priority that changed the most is that second bar in where it says vehicles have enough room for me to ride comfortably. So let, before COVID, before COVID, people, less than 50% of people thought that that was important. And now it's now up to 85%. So that's where the primary change has been in, in priorities for riders. And again, you can see the differences a little bit too. Next slide, please. Oh, and so that, that is our recap. We are going to be presenting a more detailed analysis at our Transportation Committee on Monday. So much more detail to come.
All right. Thanks, Robin. Good evening, Chair Zelli and council members. My name is Katie Roth. I'm the Assistant Director of BRT Projects, and I lead up our arterial BRT program. I'm really glad that BRT has already come up in the context of this discussion and certainly now that both the D-line and the B-line are fully funded. You're going to be seeing a lot of activity from our team in the weeks and months to come as we advance these really critical projects. This evening, I'll provide some more information about the connection between these investments and the council's equity goals. Next slide, please. As, as you know, our TRLBRT program is focused on upgrading our highest ridership bus routes with faster, frequent service and a better customer experience. And the goals of this program are to improve transit for folks who are on board today and deliver a better product that induces more people to ride the bus as we've seen on the A-line and the C-line. And as we look on this slide to our total ridership pre-pandemic, we see that half of all Metro Transit ridership was concentrated on these eight routes. And after LRT, I think it's worth noting that each of the remaining top ridership routes is either already BRT, in the case of the C-line, in active project development, in the case of the DB and E-lines, or being considered for future BRT within our Network Next Plan. And in particular, I want to focus in the next couple of slides on who's going to benefit from the D-line and D-line, our next two now fully funded projects. Next slide, please. So bringing up some of the information that already showed up in this presentation, but focusing more on Route 5 that will become the D-line. The D-line is going to advance $75 million in making service about 25% faster and improving facilities with about 60 new stations along our highest ridership bus route, and that bus route is that is most used by riders who identify as black, indigenous, or people of color. And looking here in kind of two dimensions, on the left are figures about who lives around the D-line based on census data. Of the 120,000 people that live along that corridor, more than 57% identify as BIPOC. And this, this route would not only provide service to those folks in their home locations, but provide access to more than 200,000 jobs along that corridor, as well as a gateway to the rest of the transit system. And as we look to the right side, as Eric mentioned previously, nearly three quarters of the riders on Route 5 today and the majority of riders on this, excuse me, are, are black and business or people of color, and the majority are black or African-American specifically. With the D-line, this project is now fully funded. And last week was a big week. We also received the final construction plan. We're now ready to seek bids in November and are positioning the project to break ground in the spring and for operations here to begin in late 2022. Next slide, please. Next slide.
I think we may be seeing the next slide, but you're not.
Great. Can we actually go back one slide, please, Greg? There we go. I think I lost audio for just a second. All right. Next, in the queue, we're advancing the B-line for 2023 construction and a 2024 service launch, upgrading Route 21. And as mentioned previously, this is our second highest ridership bus route. It's also among our slowest routes. During the afternoon rush hour, pre-pandemic speeds and portions of this corridor were regularly as slow as eight miles an hour. With the BRT improvements, we'd be able to improve the speed and facilities on this route for 106,000 people and provide access to 131,000 jobs. And note also on this, on this slide that 42% of corridor residents along the B-line identify as black, indigenous, or people of color. Now for the next slide, please, Greg. Thank you. As, as we think about BRT and the investments in the B-line and the D-line, the physical station improvements and the buses are some of the more visible parts of the investment. But also critical is that improvement in access and really the usefulness of the transit system that we can provide for our riders by making that service about 20 to 25% faster than the existing local route. On this graphic, you can see how far somebody can travel. On this graphic, you can see how far somebody can travel from a point on the map that's shown by the person there near Selby and Victoria Street in St. Paul on service today. And as we toggle to the next slide and factor in the faster service, straightening out the route, this area that you can reach in different amounts of time grows very significantly. And I think also what you can start to see is that with those darker blue, north-south blue bubbles around Snowing Avenue, one thing we'll be able to see as we add that east-west B line is what improving access with a network of BRT lines can start to do toward improving regional access for our riders. Next slide. And as we move forward with developing the D line, the B line and the E line, of course, we're also centering equity in how we prioritize future lines and identify what our F line and beyond will be for BRT. Equity, advancing equity and reducing racial, regional racial disparities is one of the four principles guiding the overall plan in Network Next. And equity as that principle is shaping how routes have been selected for inclusion in this work, as well as how they're being evaluated and prioritized across the winter and into the spring toward the F line selection. Equity is also shaping how we engage with our community to represent our riders' voices in shaping those priorities and building on all of the good learning that has come out of the process that Robin just described. We are doing a lot more to continue learning and to build in ways to continue to try to reach our goal of, of getting responses and hearing from community members who represent our ridership. So with that, I'll hand things over to Adam Harrington.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Adam Harrington. I'm the Director of Service Development. And as the chair started us out, that equity is the work that we do. And certainly for service development, as we look to plan and manage the level of service on all of our routes around the region, that is what we do each day. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about where we're at now and some of the initiatives that we're working on actively. Next slide. I've shared this slide with council members in previous presentations, but I think it's important to reiterate here because it is a cyclical process in the planning world. So in service development, we look at the data that is available based on what our ridership trends are, who the people are, what are the demographics, what are the jobs that we are able to serve? And we use that information along with our customer dataset, our operators' comments and our stakeholder input, community engagement to develop a plan. We develop that plan and apply an equity lens to it. And as I had mentioned in previous presentations, an equity lens, as it's currently stands, is actually something embedded in practice because each one of our staff know very well the communities that we serve from riding service, from meeting with the community members, from meeting with our bus operators and train operators, and have a good understanding of who we're serving and what their needs are. And that's supported by a lot of the data that you've already seen in this presentation. So we develop a plan, we apply our equity lens based on both the data and real professional experience of our staff. And then at a certain scale, we do a more rigorous Title VI analysis, which is the federally required analysis when we make a major service change. And in fact, one of the things I'll talk a little bit about is doing that this year and on an annual basis rather than a triennial basis, which is what our current program is moving forward. So we do that analysis and make sure that our work isn't proving to provide a disparate impact to any one community, then we work in the scheduled development implementation and we start the process over again. Next slide. So this is, this is something that we do all the time. And according to the general manager's request, what we, what we want to do is a better job in reporting those things that are measurable and repeatable. So here's a list of some of the things that we are going to be working on. A report this year to look back on the past year between September twenty nineteen and September twenty twenty, all the things that have changed, both with and without COVID. And what are the impacts? One of the more important aspects to how we evaluate our service and our service levels is the geography and the populations and communities that we serve. So that's an important part to how we represent those changes and what the impacts might be. So this list goes through a series of those that we actually do already, but we need to do a better job reporting them. Next slide. Here's a comparative graph. So Eric Lynn presented the first graph on the left earlier. And the, it represents the demographics of each route type. And then on the right shows the level of service by number of weekday trips. So these are the number of bus or train trips that we schedule every single day on an intentional basis. The gray line or the gray bar in the, in the bar graph is from twenty nineteen and the black bar is from twenty twenty. So you can see from this graph that moving from left to right, the suburban locals have backed to nearly a hundred percent, as are the core locals, as are LRT. And supporting locals are actually more. And that's in part because we had a different categorization of a couple of the local routes. BRT is the same. And the most significant change is the drop in the number of commuter express trips. And when we think about why that is, we think about the current pandemic and the, if you can work at home, stay at home or work remotely. And that encompasses a lot of downtown employees in Minneapolis and St. Paul and U of M. And so that demand has changed significantly and we have adjusted accordingly. Next slide. Here's another representation of that same type of information. This is the scheduled trips that go across any single bus stop in the system. So a question came up earlier about how can we understand what the level of service is that's out there today? And hopefully this map can represent that with some legibility. So you can see the dark blue purple dots that represent number of daily trips. The larger the dot, the more the trips. The yellow areas are the ACP fifties. And I also want to point out that the ACP fifty boundary areas are just one slice. And we actually look at a more detailed level of demographics when we're looking at Title VI and a more strenuous look. So this is just one slice of it. The gold lines that are out on the freeways, those are actually express routes that are suspended. So that gives you a sense of where our service focus is right now. Next slide. Title VI is a federal law that requires that agencies receiving federal funding do not discriminate against minority and low income populations. And each time we make a major service change, we're required by council policy and the FTA to do an analysis. And every three years, we do a system analysis of not just service levels, but bus stops, shelters, where we deploy our vehicles and a number of other aspects of it. The map on the right shows a number of different colors. And this gets to a much more detailed level of analysis. It's census block group. And the categories that are highlighted in color on this map are non-minority, non-low income populations in the, kind of the pale yellow, minority, non-low income populations in the blue, non-minority, non-low income, excuse me, non-minority, low income, and then minority and low income. So we take a little bit different look and a more detailed look as part of this review. Now Title VI is not the be all and end all of equity. It's just one lens from which we look at our service and see how we can do better. Next slide. So I mentioned that we're going to be doing this analysis for our service today compared to the last year. We're actually under a peacetime emergency right now and under a pandemic situation. So we wouldn't normally be required to do a Title VI analysis, but I think it's a useful help for us in understanding what the impacts are and being able to report that back. So the map on this slide represents the darker the red, the more trips have been reduced or suspended between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And again, this is just one slice of it. There's a much more detailed report that will be coming out as part of our overall equity analysis. Next slide. So lastly, I want to talk about these three categories. I mentioned briefly the annual and quarterly service analysis. And so we're looking at comparing fall twenty nineteen to twenty twenty on a number of the metrics that were listed before. And as part of that process, we're identifying where there might be equity gaps in our analysis and our measurements and opportunities. And from that, we're going to be developing future equity metrics that may take a little bit more time to develop and refine so that we won't, we don't want to hold up this analysis for twenty twenty, but we do want to improve our analysis moving forward. So some of the things listed on this, under future, future equity metrics are refining the definition of ACP fifties, what's the right nomenclature? What are the right geographies we want to include? What's a finer grain that maybe we can apply to it? Average transit speeds by route or route segments? What are the speed and reliability improvement programs? How do they affect, what are the fair policies and tools? What's the financial investment by mode? And looking at how we value congestion mitigation air quality aspects and taking another look at what the disparate impact threshold is for the Title VI analysis as it's currently designed. So with that, that completes my part of the presentation and we can advance to the next slide for the next presenter.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Dunka. I work, I'm the Manager of Strategy and Performance in the department called Strategic Initiatives along with Eric. And the work I'm going to just present today is a collaboration effort. Next slide, please. So one of my roles in Metro Transit is really to emphasize an approach to performance measurement that links them with our goals and to be really explicit about why we're measuring something, why we set a goal, who we're impacting and the how part and providing staff the resources to figure that out and to communicate it. So just like other performance metrics, we, why do we do it? We want to understand if we are making progress in racial equity. And we want to be, we don't want to, we want to be able to really explain to folks how we're defining it and how we're measuring it. And the work that we're leading right now is really pretty, has a broad scope. We're talking about racial equity metrics and goals with relative to our riders' experience, our community's access and our employees' experience. And with each of these metrics that we are exploring and starting to work on, we have a patterned approach. We want to have an explicit goal. We want to have a metric and we want to have a target. What, what are we defining as success and at what time period? And probably most difficult and most important is the accountability process. So who's paying attention to reviewing these metrics and goals? And what is the input process with the community to make them better and ensure that they align with the lived experiences of our riders, our community members and our employees? Next slide, please. So these are the areas of work that we've just started in the last several months, looking at in more detail. So we're looking at service levels, things like trip counts, job accessibility, et cetera, some metrics we've already heard discussed in these previous conversations. We're also looking at disaggregating performance by race in areas like on-time performance. We know that reliability is something that's really critical, a critical way to define success for our service. And so we need to start asking questions if different parts of our community are experiencing our quality in different ways. Infrastructure, one way that you've already heard about that is through the Better Bus Stops program. We do have a, that's one of our first equity metrics that we operationalized was looking at our, the experience waiting for a bus, what amenities are available disaggregated by race. And there's other categories of metrics and goals that we're reviewing. I want to show you though and spend a little, very brief amount of time talking about an example of what I mean when I say that with every equity metric, we should have a goal, a target, an approach and a clear transparent method to our disaggregation and our accountability process. So those three questions on the right, I'm going to walk through with an example. Next slide. So this is what I mean when I'm talking about what, what we're talking about as setting a goal and a measure and that, how they relate. So an example goal, this isn't one that has been adopted by the council or is in any explicit policy documents. But we can, we can, just with reason, based on these previous presentations, we know that our high frequency network, our metro networks, our light rail lines, our bus rapid transit lines, they have a frequency, they have amenities that are really valuable. And we know that those, once they're placed in our communities, are considered an asset to that community. So a sample equity, racial equity goal might be, race does not relate to the access to high frequency service. And this example goal, we're setting an equality as the target. That might not be the appropriate target. It might, it, maybe it should be an affirmative goal. But these are just ways in which we're trying to be really explicit with what we're measuring and what we're trying to achieve. So when we have that sample equity goal established, we could think about this in thinking about what is the population weighted access to high frequency network defined as the high frequency or metro network? That sounds kind of boring or difficult to explain. And so I'm going to move to the next slide to just explain what we mean. So this is looking on the, the, this is looking at the access to frequent service. So the access to that high quality, high frequency bus route or metro network. And what we're saying in this slide is, just using it in plain language, because I think that's really helpful, is that for residents living near a transit stop, so that means a ten-minute walker roll, sixteen percent of white residents have access to high frequency service, while thirty-four percent of black residents have access to high frequency service. So in this, in this example goal and example metric, we have achieved the, the goal that we have achieved parity. And in fact, we might, it might make sense to set an affirmative goal based on the historical patterns of investment in transportation. But we can say at this point, for those living near transit, so those living within a walking distance of our current network, race, we can say is not a predictor of access to frequent service. And then the other element of this is talking about the accountability process. And so if we were to adopt this, for example, as a, as an explicit racial equity goal for our agency, we could explain who's reviewing this metric, how does it inform service planning or council policy? Or could be considered. Next slide. Please. And I want to really mention that the work that we're doing here is to show the, demonstrate the possibility of how we can disaggregate our performance with a racial equity lens. But we are very, very cognizant. My team, Eric's team and some others that are in service development, often we're working on this work without, as many of us are, the majority are white, as Leslie mentioned in the beginning. And we know that the, for these to be relevant and important and reflective experiences, that black, indigenous and people of color need to guide the selection and the prioritization of the goals and equity metrics. Our job is to propose and show examples of potential areas of focus. And so there's some specific strategies we're going to employ to, to center black, indigenous and people of color, whether they're community members, riders or employees. These are some of them, working with Leslie to ask the Equity Advisory Committee for input on how they would like to influence these equity metrics. We are working with equity and inclusion teams, areas of recommendations that you heard about earlier that are leading the focus on employee goals and metrics. And I would say the same for that with OEO and HR, that we might have Metro Transit specific ones, but we need to be aligned with the work that they're doing that is connected with BIPOC community. And we also know that there's a lot of information out there about performance that could be disaggregated by race. And so if we already know, for example, that we're measuring something like reliability or speed, if we know that's important to our customers and has been told that already, that it's that it's reason to investigate and think about ways in which we could set racial equity goals and metrics. Thank you. And I think Leslie is next to talk about budgeting.
I am, all right. And Greg, go ahead into the next slide, please. So this is our final content slide. But I wanted to just talk about one of the general managers, initial equity action subs that we hadn't talked about yet thus far tonight. As was mentioned at the beginning of this, council equity policy already requires us to use equity as a lens when evaluating our planning, operations and investments. Back in August, when the Transportation Committee received the information item on the 2021 preliminary budget, we spent a little time in that meeting talking about how at Metro Transit, we're starting to rethink our approach to that and trying again to become more deliberate and intentional in doing that work. As I shared with the Transportation Committee back in August, our initial focus is really around how our budget supports these three areas of work. The transit service we provide, the programs to improve transit access and quality and utilization, and the organizational practices that are really critical to equitable processes and outcomes. So on transit service, I feel Adam gave you a really good sense of how our service development department in particular is thinking about how the service we're putting on the street has the potential to contribute to equity. Just to extrapolate a little bit on what Adam shared with you, the preliminary budget assumption is that for bus, we'll be at about 80% of pre-COVID service levels, which is comparable to what the current September PIC service level is. And as Adam shared with September, 80% system-wide doesn't mean 80% everywhere, but rather, we've really been deliberate in making sure we're providing resources in the core routes where we continue to see relatively strong ridership throughout COVID. As it relates to the programs that improve transit, we already have talked about a lot of those tonight. BRT, Better Bus Stops, TAP, the programs the police are engaged in, HAT, all of their community partnerships. So that's another piece of the budget. Those, there are another way our budget can really support the work that we believe is connected to advancing equity. And finally, the organizational practices that are critical to this. This is where I would throw, you know, public engagement, our DBE and MCOB utilization, diverse hiring, retention and promotion, the work of our equity and inclusion team itself. You know, there's all sorts of internal practices we need to make sure we're supporting and resourcing to make this work happen. So as I note on this slide, I really am viewing 2020 as a learning year on this as part of the strategic framework work that Wes mentioned earlier on. We're, one of the priorities in there is really looking at our budget and how we are assuring we're good stewards of the public dollar. And as part of that, we're really going to have an opportunity to map out the existing process and heading into the next budget development cycle, be in a better position to think about equity much earlier on in the process than we were for this current budget. So, and I, I just want to echo what Rachel said too, that I think part of this will be closely collaborating with Robin's group and making sure we understand what our customers are telling us, what the public is telling us through our public engagement. We're hopeful that particularly as Equity Advisory Committee is changing some of their process to potentially move to more of a subcommittee model where we could have a subcommittee on public transportation. That that could be another opportunity for us to work more closely with them on several of these topics you've seen today. So all of this is still very much in, in the, the works. And in some ways is just going back to that initial theme that we wanted to come tonight to really give you a sense of where work is now, but also share it with you. And it's still in the works and still a bit messy and certainly welcome your feedback. So with that, Greg, do you want to advance the last slide? We will take any of your questions or step back and let you discuss.
Leslie and your whole team, thank you so much. That is a lot of material. And I know we'll undoubtedly have some comments and questions. Weaver.
Yeah, this was a really great presentation, 56 pages. And I stayed awake for every moment of it. So I, I mean, I really can see the effort that was put into the work behind the scenes and I want to recognize our staff are doing such a good job on their equity evaluation, listening to communities and more importantly, learning how to do our work better as we continuously improve. And one of the things that, or maybe several things that I noted, I wanted to note was when we look at our goals for engagement, I noticed that we were looking at, you know, disaggregating the data. And I know that there's a lot to learn for how we disaggregate that data and we're going to have more opportunities after this census to do that even better. The follow-up, I think, is really important in terms of how we make our improvements and looking at how we can improve our strategies. I noted in part of the presentation that you talked about information about refugees and people seeking asylum. That is one way of disaggregating the data, which is great. And you're talking about the survey method matters and learned about the importance of utilizing different survey techniques to be effective. I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes. And I think you have made a good start and I'll be following.
Stay tuned. Francisco, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to comment that some of the members of the team that presented just now also had been very responsive to the Equity Advisory Committee's requests for information. And they were just in fact presenting yesterday at our regular meeting. So I, I just want to thank them for their willingness to work with the EAC. And the EAC is very committed and interested in being engaged in this process. So we look forward to working with all the folks to make sure that, you know, the, the, the many good ideas that we've been discussing do get implemented with the input from the folks from the EAC. So thank you.
That's great to hear. And then our Transportation Committee Chair, Deb, you, this must, some of this must look familiar to you, but, and those are on the Transportation Committee, but.
Yes, a lot of this looks familiar and the team's been working very hard and, and for quite some time on this. And, and I think that really showed today. So I just wanted to comment and say to the team who's working on this, thank you very much for really well thought out analysis and planning going forward. But I do want to give a special shout out and thank you to the Equity and Inclusion Team. These are people who take time out of their day to spend time on this, who work on many efforts across the council. And I think this is far more valuable information because we're hearing the voices of the people within the organization. And I think that's been very key to really the success, success of, of building this program together so that we can look to hopefully seeing good measurable results in the near-term future. So thank you to all.
Thanks, Deb. Linaea.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I also want to just recognize the work of, beyond the Equity Inclusion Team, them and thank them for today. But also recognize that so many staff took fairly risky steps this summer to amplify things. This council has been really championing around advancing equity. And I really believe that public organizations and institutions are their best when the officials and the staff are working together in the same direction. So I want to recognize all the staff who sent in notes and emails and participated in the town halls and got engaged and let them know that we're partners in this work and really grateful for those representatives that are on the call today. So I hope that this is a moniker of great change. You know, I wanted to also share some of the things that I'm hoping to hear in the future more about when it comes to the metrics. And one of those things, I'm really inspired by Wells Fargo and Starbucks and other organizations who've really doubled down, set goals and clear metrics, and then tied them to accountability measures internally and have tied them to executive compensation and review processes. And so what I really am looking forward to hearing is how we're creating a system of accountability and radical and meaningful measure change. I also recall in some of our conversations over the last year around when we talked about negotiating processes, how we've applied a lens of equity that has really aided in such an important way women. But I also recognize in this side of our, or part of our work, we still have a lot of way to go to retaining women, but also thinking about how do we retain? And I heard our frontline staff say, hey, I've invested, I want to be here, where's my ladder up? And so I want to make sure that we're in our negotiating processes, building ways that we are making things better to retain our diverse staff. Because right now, we're a revolving door for women and people of color and that's expensive. You know, when you have a staff person turnover, you lose 75% of their annual survey or their annual salary. That costs a lot of money. So I want, in addition to, you don't have a stronger organization. So those are the things I'm looking forward to hearing about. And I guess the last thing I would share is that several weeks ago, we, I and a few others received some information related to an equity issue with young people in our buses. And I haven't seen any response post that. And I intentionally kind of paused to make space for others to respond. And it wasn't talked about today either. And council members have asked that it be shared with them. I think it's really important to think about, if you're going to have an equity conversation, think about the dynamics and the context and the conversations that we're having and be really thoughtful about that. What I'm looking for is our organization to be knitting together the pieces and really showing a nuanced understanding of how inequity has continued to shape our practices and that we can't have equity in some places and inequity in other places and maintain trust. And we can only move at the speed of trust. So those are the things that I've thought of and I really hope that this is really truly a good step forward for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have a comment? Judy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add my thanks and appreciation to everybody who's put a lot of effort into this presentation and the work. I have, you know, increasing confidence and excitement about it. It's hard, but you know, the goal is still there and we've really got to, you know, through many avenues and layers, get there. I, I also just want to echo what Council Member Alice Ingubritson said about the internal team that's leading the equity work. I really appreciated as well, hearing about their commitment and the desire to move up in the organization. So as we look externally to our clients that we're serving, just echoing again, making sure that internally we are giving opportunity, providing opportunity, opening doors for people. And, and I think I've said this before, but you know, instead of, you know, having to conduct exit interviews, that revolving door that was referenced, people that are leaving the organization that we really wish would stay, conducting nothing formal necessarily, but maybe formal, but you know, stay interviews. You know, what path would you like within the council? How can we help you get there? Maybe it's in a whole another division or department, I don't know. But I guess, you know, that's the, I think the relationship that we want with one another in this organization. And, and so I'm just really sending a lot of kudos and high praise to the internal team for again, stepping out of maybe a comfort zone, I don't know, but leaning into the work and helping us get to where we want to go.
Great, thank you. Any else want to share a thought or question?
Mr. Chair, this is Council Member Wolf.
Sure, hi Wendy.
Hi, I wanted to say, yeah, I thought it was a great presentation too. And I, I was one of the people who asked for that presentation or the information that Linaea was referencing. But I also wanted to bring up that we really, with the bonding bill being signed, we really need to figure out what the final route is for the D-line and encourage our staff to work with Minneapolis to figure out what that is because we can't bid it if we don't know where it goes.
Wes, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll just say that we are working closely with Minneapolis Public Works Department on that. And I, I meet regularly with Robin and, and had the discussion with her at a recent, I believe it was last, I think it was last Friday. But more importantly, Charles and Katie and others are, are, are working closely with Minneapolis staff about, about that. And I know that part of what, part of the, the solution, this is going to be driven by what Minneapolis decides they want to do with that, with that intersection. And, and we're trying to be supportive and, and, and make things work for, it's kind of a both and. How can we find a both and on this? So the work, I, I'm just mentioning the work is being done and the, and the relationship is there and that we need to move this along. A lot, a lot depends on Minneapolis, of course, and should.
Thank you, yeah, I agree. It's just, I want to make sure that the residents and business owners in that corridor know that we've got to figure this out and, and that there is a timeline for, for when we have to get this done the way they want to do it. I mean, we, we can't start until we know where it goes.
I think that point Wendy is well taken and we may need to assert some, some leadership to help find the right solution there. Weaver, did you have a comment?
Thank you. Yeah, I, just a couple small comments. When we were talking about working with legislation regarding the fare evasion, maybe just slightly wordsmithing that on page 24. It says continuing to pursue legislation for administrative citations for fare evasion. If you were not familiar with what our plans are, you might think that we are advocating for citations. So I would maybe just change that from four to on or regarding, instead of four. So that's just a little wordsmithing. And then on page 53, it sounds like there was good success in terms of equity and frequency in that that goal is being made. But I'd maybe want to put a positive spin on it and, and say that instead of race is not a prediction of frequency, rather, we've shown that we've met the needs of residents regarding frequency in terms of the BIPOC community with the goal of preserving that success. And potentially in terms of continuous improvement, looking at targeting another area or additional areas of need for equity and identifying where those gaps are. So I see that as a positive thing. When we've met our goal, let's celebrate that and look to continue and improve upon that in other areas.
And maybe what you're saying is not just equal and not a predictor, we've actually. met the goal more beyond. I mean, there is some data showing, wait a minute, we're actually doing better than just being, you know, a non...
Yeah. Yeah, I think that saying that it's not a predictor is a little bit misleading.
Yeah.
Because it's really about what our goal and what our need is.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? You know, Wes, and I'll weigh in with Leslie and the entire team, and there was quite a few presenters, and those on the Equity and Inclusion Team who really stepped forward to present, that was really impressive. I really appreciate all the comments that came from not just staff, but how we approached engagement, and I think it's really important that you've said, that you've all said, this is a point in time that we're going to, we're going to kind of keep doing this continuous improvement, and I think what Wendy and the councilmember Alice Ingubritson asked for some of the data on youth interactions, and I think we're going to be able to share that more, also in the context of some of the police reviews, so we don't want to hold that back. So that's really important to bring that up. I don't know, Wes, do you have anything else you want to say in terms of a closing argument, closing statement? But again, I think we want to hear more, and I think we've heard great interest in how we're continuing this direction.
Yeah, just quickly, I thank you first for your patience, because we did go through a lot of slides there, but the purpose was to give you the breadth of what we're working on, and I want to go back to saying, you know, this isn't all we're working on, and we're not working on enough. And we know that, and it's hard, it really is hard work, and I think that we're trying to be self-aware with respect to where we're, what we're good at and what we're not good at, to respect to who we are as leaders and what gaps we need to fill in the makeup of leadership and approach to this. I'll also mention that a lot of the issues that were raised with respect to things that we should be looking at, they're showing up in that strategic framework that I'm talking about, and we'll have time and other time to talk about that. And we raise this in part to share the hard work that's being done, but also in part to be accountable to you, because as we've said, this is the start of that work, this isn't the end of that work, and there needs to be more to come, and we can go deeper into these areas as we progress and as you have interest in us going deeper into it, and we just welcome, absolutely welcome, your feedback and your input into this and acceptance of us in terms of a learning body, a learning organization, and we want to be a learning organization. And with your grace in that regard, we would appreciate moving forward with you.
Thank you, Wes, and I really appreciate on that note that we all have to kind of step into this with some humility, because we're all learning, and I really appreciate that sentiment from you and your staff that you're reaching and learning and accepting the feedback of this group. So thank you, everybody, for your really thoughtful engagement and patience and interest. So this is going to be more of what we're going to be looking at over the next weeks and months. Speaking of which, just as a reminder, November, we actually are going to have two meetings of our council meetings, special meetings because of the calendar. Because of Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, we're actually going to be having just those two meetings, and then I think our next committee of the whole won't be until December 2nd, so don't stray too far. I stayed awake because I took a walk out in the snow, so I always recommend that, and stay safe and warm. Any other thoughts, questions, burning? No? Okay, well, thank you all, and we look forward to seeing you soon. Take care. Meetings adjourned. Thanks, everybody.